It is six o'clock and I call the Tuesday, December 5th, City Commission Meeting to order. We will begin with the roll call.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
Mayor, we have four commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this is the first legislative meeting of the month, we are now going to provide for public comments on items that are not on the agenda for this evening. You'll have up to five minutes. We will take your information under advisement, but not get into a big debate about it. If anybody would care to talk about something that's not on tonight's agenda anywhere, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Please, commissioners, do you have any comments about?
Just generally, we started up. The town gown group has met twice this fall with a renewed interest in connecting for beginning the next, beginning in spring semester and moving forward because we feel like that that's a needed piece, connecting with the student leadership, the university administration, and the city. And certainly Jared Wassinger is the staff liaison to that group. And we do some brainstorming. The other is that I'm representative to the Flint Hills Regional Council. And we are current, and things have been going very well. We're very financially stable. We are, however, conducting a search for the executive director position. And we're down to some final people that we're going to be interviewing next week. So when you hear from us next, we will probably have a new executive director. So that's good news to bring somebody onboard that's thinking regionally and not just myopic-ly, myopically. So that's all. Thank you. And I think I did go to General Meyer's reception at Fort Riley last Friday. And it was scaled back a little bit because so many of the soldiers are deployed right now. But it was a good, a good event. He was especially appreciative and thankful to the soldiers for the work that they do, for the leaders, for the community members. And he even kind of caused me to, I don't know, just squirm a little bit because he did talk a little bit about, you know, the concern that we could have a reason here in the U.S. to have, be in an uncomfortable position, whether we're ever attacked or whatever. It just, he put it gently, but it made it through to me. And so I think it gives us pause. I think about people in the Ukraine and Israel and Palestine and how just torturous it is to be having, fighting and be hungry and be needing. So anyway, just that's enough. Thank you. I just wanted to bring those points up.
John, anything?
No.
Well, okay. I don't have anything either. So we will move on to the consent agenda, which are items of a routine or housekeeping nature or that have been previously considered. A commissioner may request an item be removed and discussed separately. A comment from the public will be allowed here in a few minutes. Commissioners, is there any item on the consent agenda that you have questions, concerns, or want to pull off and discuss separately? Okay.
I don't want to pull anything off. I am glad to see a housing proposal with those tax credits go forward. It's bigger than I thought, than what I expected because I am anxious for some low-income housing to be a part of this tax credit money that's available through the state. But I'm, sixty units, our community needs housing. It's a, it's a good thing. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, very good. If anybody in the public would like to comment on any items that are on the consent agenda, please come forward at this time. You have up to five minutes. And we will take your comments under advisement. Seeing none, I will close the public comment on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Hassel.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. Our one item on the agenda tonight is to consider amending the Aggieville Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan. So we're going to reopen and resume the public hearing, which we started a couple of weeks ago, and with a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. This evening, as you mentioned, we're going to go through an opportunity for the public to react to a change in the TIF redevelopment plan that exists in Aggieville. That TIF plan was adopted in September of 2019. The paragraph, the only paragraph we're changing within the plan is identified above. It's paragraph G. It's one of many public project areas that we described throughout the plan. The language here really describes Laramie between 11th Street and North Manhattan. It acknowledges that we owned a parking lot and that we had planned to go out and see if we could redevelop the parking lot at 12th and Laramie. As you all know, that's been part of an ongoing project with BACK9, referred commonly to as the Midtown Development. But this also identified the public infrastructure that would be improved from 11th Street to North Manhattan Avenue along Laramie itself. So tonight, again, Laramie between 11th and North Manhattan. You had the Handy Corner property between 11th and 12th. And then from 12th to North Manhattan, we had our city parking lot, which again, just reminding you where we're at in the previous relationship we had with BACK9 for the Midtown Development. So tonight, that paragraph in subsection G expands itself. And this plan starts to describe an additional development that would occur between 11th and 12th on Laramie. The plan itself did not identify a garage in which tax increment finance, TIF funds, could be used for. This plan with this amendment tonight does describe a TIF-eligible project in a parking garage. That is, in effect, the only change in that first paragraph. It references the parking garage as a project that TIF can actually finance. The second paragraph defines revenue streams that could be generated from the area that we're essentially adding here on Laramie in description that you can capture. Doesn't say you will, doesn't say you shall. It says you may capture sales tax, transient guest tax, property taxes generated from those private, this private development immediately north of Laramie between 11th and 12th. And you may use those to fund the construction. I stress those words because nothing you're doing tonight obligates the city to do anything with TIF funds. This redevelopment plan amendment gives you the flexibility to do that. There's nothing you're agreeing to tonight that will obligate those funds. All you're doing is passing a plan amendment that would allow you to consider that development agreement in the future, where you could allow TIF funds to go towards that project. When we were before you, six weeks ago, in a work session format, and we talked about Midtown and Handy Corner and different revenue streams, in order for us to proceed with the developer and actually generate a development agreement to talk about what tools we would make available to that developer, this plan had to be amended. So we found that out via bond council. We've developed it. We put out the public hearing notice. These are the changes in the plan that you're being asked to consider tonight in this hearing and being asked to consider as part of the ordinance moving forward. There is a separate action, a future action with a development agreement that we talked about six weeks ago as well, that we've been working on, that you will have on a future agenda after this TIF amendment is passed, if it's passed. If it's not passed, the development agreement conversation's really mute. It's not going to happen. Because if we can't amend the plan to allow for any of these revenue streams to be used within that block, I think the developer has shared with you this won't be a project they can pursue as designed in that presentation. Any questions with the language that you're being asked to consider tonight in this subsection G?
So we're only talking about property tax, sales tax, transient guest tax and stuff that are generated by the project going to pay for part of the parking garage? And the parking garage is a city developer agreed upon?
Correct. The plan itself doesn't necessarily require us to put that second paragraph in. We are calling it out in the plan specifically isolating revenues between 11th and 12th and north of Laramie in that half-block that can be eligible towards that parking structure, which really means all other revenues generated within the TIF are not eligible. Just these revenues. That's, that's how we wanted to write it. That's how, that's what we talked with you all about six weeks ago. And it's what the development agreement will reflect as well.
Okay.
But is there other tool? Like, do they all use the CID thing? Is that off the table?
It's not something they're pursuing at this time. It also would not be part of the TIF. It would be a completely different tool.
But it could still be used, though?
If they wanted to charge themselves an additional sales tax rate and capture that, yes, they could.
Okay.
That's what a CID would do. The IRB has been another conversation about this project for the sales tax exemption on the construction, also not part of the Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Plan.
I just want to be sure it didn't exclude that.
Correct.
Those are still open avenues in addition to this.
Correct.
Anybody else? Questions for Jason?
Just want to remind you, this is the TIF boundary. This is going to be consistent in the original plan and this plan. This is a public project plan concept, again, part of the original plan in 19. That does not change. We could change the map to reflect paragraph G. Future development is still a future development, but we could call out a parking garage like we did over here at North Manhattan and Laramie if we desired. But again, that paragraph description will satisfy the plan change. Just another map to reflect the area that we're talking about, between 11th and North Manhattan, the primary building two, Phase Two Hotel slash Parking Garage.
So are we changing the TIF boundary tonight?
Nope, we are not.
All right.
Stays the same.
All right, thanks.
Yep. This hearing and the first reading are about the TIF plan amendment. And as I mentioned, there's a development agreement that would follow after the TIF plan is considered. We do need four of you to vote for the TIF plan. As we mentioned six weeks ago, it takes a supermajority of the commission. Since you only have four seated of five seats on council and legal have determined all four of you would need to pass it in order for it to become effective. And that's first reading and second reading, which is why we obviously moved our last hearing till tonight for where we can have all four of you present and part of the meeting and participate in that vote. I'll go over a little bit of a development review in terms of an overview that was provided as part of the packet as well. They tentatively agreed to build this 500-stall parking garage. They're also talking about their mixed-use building, the Midtown, and then the hotel on the east side with the garage. The total private investment is in that overview of 105 million in principal. They've estimated over 200 million with cost of financing. The garage itself is a piece of that. So it's 25 of the 105 million in principal they plan to invest, costing them roughly 48.8 million with financing. They're seeking up to around $16 million in TIF revenue. And that's all three of those revenue streams combined between property tax, sales tax, and transient guest tax from their site that they're constructing upon. So I just want to give you that background as well. Any of that development agreement summary, we can pull up and talk about if you'd like. To me, that's more of like a work session type of format. If you don't like what you're seeing, you want to see something different, that's fine. But it is separate from the vote tonight on the TIF plan. So tonight, we're looking at the hearing and the first reading of the ordinance. December 12th is a special meeting, which we will more than likely call from the city manager's office tomorrow. That will include, if passed tonight, second reading of the ordinance itself. And then we would look to bring back the development agreement if we can agree to move that to the 19th this evening as well. So with that, I am open for questions. We can pull up anything from the TIF amendment itself to the overview of the development agreement. I know the developer and their team are also here this evening. If you have comments or questions you'd like to address with them, they're available.
The, so with the original TIF plan, was there a, going to be a second parking garage in, on the east side of town? There's, on the east side of Aggieville?
So the original vision had multiple garages in Aggieville. We had identified where our current parking garage is as a site. We identified a second site on the east side of the district. At the time, we were thinking more about the parking lot we own, next to Hunam, and extending it north in a multi-use type of redevelopment project. I think consultants and the teams that we had were advocating for garages on either end, the east and the west, given the access points off 14th and 11th, to try to keep folks from trying to get to the middle of the district, have those garages on the edges. We didn't want to impose on private property completely in that vision, so we tied them to parking lots that we already owned.
And the plan at that point would have been for the city to pay for, build, and operate those?
Correct. We had envisioned anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200 new stalls via parking garages. If you recall, the first garage was supposed to encompass even part of the Burger King lot. So it was supposed to be the entire half-block visionary, if we could have acquired it, and went up multiple levels. We obviously built the one there at North Manhattan and Laramie with the potential of it expanding. It was designed in a way that it could expand to the west.
Up.
To the west, yeah. Up, I don't believe we put the piers in to go above where we're at. Plus, our zoning regs kind of wanted where it's at. But you, there was a second garage to deal with the potential for further development. And we looked at square footage of retail and commercial and mixed-use and office and residential, just to see different scenarios. But we had a low-end scenario of around 1,000. We had a high-end scenario of up to 1,500, 1,600 new stalls.
Okay. All right, any other questions right now? Or we'll throw it open for public comment. And then if the developer would like to throw in some words at some point to answer questions, we'll let you guys do that, too. So will, anybody would care to comment on this TIF redevelopment amendment? Please come forward, state your name. You have up to five minutes. And we will take anything you say under advisement. Man, we already opened up the thing, didn't we? Reopened it, so. After you sign in, please state your name and your address, or if you represent somebody.
Eric Guncoff, 1214 Moro C. I'm repping Sisters of Sound. I just had a few questions regarding, sorry, a little bit nervous, regarding the construction. In TJ's PowerPoint, there was a few things that I was just wanting to kind of point out, and I was just curious about. In, in the PowerPoint, it said Midtown Land Company is going to own the garage. Public access to the 250 stalls with a manager, with a management approach to, is to be negotiated. And it's essentially contingent on whatever the city and, and BACK9 or Midtown in this regard comes up with. I was just curious on, like, what does that agreement look like? What is, what is the agreement there? And how are we ensuring that if we have a private company building this garage, that we don't have like a Marriott situation where it's essentially we're giving up a parking lot for a private company to build something there? And we're giving up stalls? Or somewhere down the line where the company that owns the garage just decides that they don't want public parking there anymore? So that's essentially the question that I have.
Okay. All right, we'll try to get you an answer here in a little bit. Anybody else care to comment? Dennis?
All right, good evening. Dennis Cook, representing the Aggieville Business Association. 1125 Moro. We did have, we did put a letter in there in your packet. You saw that, that the Aggieville Business Association Board of Directors did vote on this unanimously to support this project. We, you know, we've talked about the positives of this, of the idea of having these projects go forward. The possibility of employing hundreds of people daily in Aggieville is nothing but a positive for us. The 250 public parking spaces is needed on that east end. And the, and then the 250 that are more private, it also shouldn't be ignored. That's a, that's a support piece, not only for the hotel, but for, for people who are going to be working in the Midtown project. So that doesn't put an extra burden someplace else. So we think, we see that as all very positive. The, you know, the, the use of local construction is a, is a huge impact for the city, for everybody. You know, it keeps a lot of people employed. I guess I would just also throw in that, that, you know, I love Aggieville. I've been around Aggieville for a long time. I was, was in school visiting Aggieville in the, in the early 70s. I was doing business, started doing business in Aggieville in 1982 and did that for 36 years. And Aggieville was a big part of that. And I can tell you, you know, that Aggieville, I always, I loved every version of it, but there's been a lot of versions. There's been a lot of things that have been, been there that they're not there anymore. You know, it's just, it's just an evolution. Everything, everything changes. Everything moves. When, when the opportunity was there for me to, to take the director's job with the, with the Aggieville Business Association, it was mostly because of the Aggieville vision that we were going to be doing a redevelopment project. And this is, as, as great as the Aggieville redevelopment vision project is set out to be, that X-factor always was the private investment that's coming in that could do something else. Otherwise, we knew what we were going to get, which was always going to be important. But the private investment is a huge piece of this. And in taking this area, which is really underutilized, and turn it into something spectacular is a huge positive for us. So I would, I would hope that you see, see this the same way. And you've, all of you have been involved in this from day one, pretty much. And so I would hope that this be an opportunity to put your stamp on it and say, "Let's go forward with this." So I would hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment?
Hi, I'm Belinda Snyder. And I am on the Aggieville Board of Directors, but I'm here to speak personally. I've been in Manhattan for 40 years. And I've been very active in Aggieville as a business owner. Worked in Aggieville for 38. And I just want to say that this, of all the projects that we've worked on, I believe that this really does carry Aggieville and Manhattan into the future. And I think we have to put our trust in BACK9 and move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Jason Smith, President and CEO of Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I believe there's a letter in your packet from me that expressed the views of our board. And obviously, as we've said here many times, we support this project. We support the Aggieville vision. And we support this as a, as an opportunity to generate additional funds to pay for the Aggieville vision. And I'm sure we'll be back if you all move this forward to talk about that as part of the redevelopment. I think when we talk about what you're voting on tonight in terms of expanding what's available in the TIF district, it seems to me that, that having all the tools at your disposal to enhance, to move the Aggieville vision forward is important, whether it was this project or another project. So I would encourage you to consider that as you, as you consider expanding the opportunities in the, in the TIF district, as well as thinking about, again, the project and what that does in terms of providing resources to institute the infrastructure projects that are part of the vision, as well as the opportunity to construct a new garage without any city debt, which I think is important as well. And going back to the original Aggieville vision, which you've heard me talk about before predates me, but Kansas State has indicated that it's incredibly important for us to redevelop this area as a way to encourage more students into Kansas State. And we all know what that means to the entire community in terms of retail sales, in terms of workers, in terms of sales tax. So we support this. We support the Aggieville Business Association's testimony in this as well. And we support BACK9 and the project and stand ready to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi. TJ Vilkanskas, BACK9 Development. I think Jason did a great job describing what this is tonight, which is just a request to amend the TIF. The development agreement, if this does pass, will be looked at at a different date where we can go into more specifics. The representative from Sisters of Sound had some very excellent points, which we will address more in the development agreement and the future parking management plan. And so those will be answered at that point in time. But I just want to reiterate again that this amendment and our ability to request funds that we generate for public infrastructure, which would be the parking garage, that we do have that opportunity to request that. It is a key part to us moving this project forward. And just happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Anybody? Not right now, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment part. And is there any other questions for staff or anybody else? Go ahead. Put on your microphone.
Just to reiterate, the purpose, the focus tonight is to, would you restate it, please?
You bet. The red arrows are attempting to draw your attention to the changes in the plan. And that is truly what you're considering this evening, is the TIF redevelopment plan with these additions. All the public projects are identified in our redevelopment plan that was adopted in 19. The additional parking garage... plan that was adopted in nineteen. The additional parking garage within the eleventh and twelfth street block of Laramie is, is being identified, and an additional paragraph is being added to identify the revenue streams that are anticipated between eleventh and twelfth on, and on Laramie, within the Aggieville TIF, that we would isolate and potentially pledge towards that garage.
Because that is just a narrow focus compared to all of it. And I just want to be sure that we all and the public understands. So, I have an issue with the transient guest tax, using it as a tool here. I know we have tools in our toolbox, and, you know, it's one of them. But this will be the first time since the Blue Earth Plaza that we will have used transient guest tax for a development. And I think we've typically used it in other ways. And so, I probably won't be on the commission when the vote about that comes along. Is that true? I mean, I may, I'm willing to leave it in here as an option.
Yep.
But I don't intend to support it. And I don't know when that vote will be.
Potentially, potentially the nineteenth of this month.
Of December.
So, two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
We're on track to bring that development agreement back. It doesn't mean, you know, that evening it has to be passed. It could be debated, and we could go through different scenarios, if that's what you'd like to do. We're trying to get it to the point where we believe that represents where the commission was at six weeks ago. But if there's more commentary and more feedback, we'd be very open to that. And I'm sure you would give the developer an opportunity to respond to that.
Sure. And I'm perfectly willing to let the future commission make the decision, too. But I just, I wanted to clarify. That's a tripwire for me, because I, we are, it would be precedent setting, and it would be changing the direction for what we have used transient guest taxes for here in the community. And I would even, I mean, like for the, the future commission, to, to consider developing a policy about how to use, they want to use the transient guest taxes, so it isn't going to become one more tool in the toolbox for, because I think we've used it as a focus for visitors and tourism, and that's the focus that I think it traditionally belongs in. And I know that I've seen city university funds, for example. We had a process where the community got to help make a decision. And now we have overridden that with administrative decisions, more or less, more of the commission oversight, for how we're using that. There's no longer citizen input. And so, that's what I would see happening with transient guest tax also. And there's going to be, you know, there's always competition for money and for revenue. So, I would just, I did want to ask, how many floors is the parking garage? Is that for later discussion? Just, I was curious what the plan is.
I believe his presentation from six weeks ago referenced a five or six story garage. It had five hundred roughly stalls.
Yeah.
Ours is five stories. It roughly has five hundred.
So, about a hundred a floor.
I think it would, yeah. I think it would be very close to mirroring what we've built.
What we have. Okay, good. It's about the same part of, wow, part of a block.
Yeah.
Seems like. If you had to estimate, because I, we, we have the private investment piece here. If you had to estimate, how much will, will, will the city have to invest in all the, whether it's sewer, water, streets, kind of thing? Is that, because there's a cost to, for the city when, for development. And I know we have been upgrading everything Aggieville. Maybe we haven't gotten to this section yet, but.
We haven't.
Yeah.
We haven't. So, the Aggieville redevelopment investment will probably land between forty and fifty million dollars by the city, which encompasses this entire area enclosed by the red line. Primarily, a lot of that development will be west of Eleventh Street. To be determined how much we'll really invest over between Tenth and Eleventh. But we've much completed North Manhattan, Fourteenth Street, West Laramie. We're, you know, addressing Fremont today, but we, and we've got a little bit of Twelfth Street done from Blumentown down to Moro. But you can see, this area that's being proposed for redevelopment is, is an area in which we haven't yet invested in water, sewer, streets, sidewalks, landscape, streetscape, alleys. So, all those things are right on the horizon. Our preference is to do it in concert with this development.
Yeah.
So, everything can open up at the same time. So, if, if we move forward with Back Nine, and if we're redeveloping both sides of Twelfth Street, we would envision our Twelfth Street project from Moro to Fremont, and our Laramie Street project from Eleventh to North Manhattan would move very quickly along with those projects.
Does, is there any part of this redevelopment, the redevelopment plan just speaks to Back Nine, or this development proposal, these two proposals? It doesn't have, I'm curious what, what's on the, on the agenda, or what's planned? You know, how you look back in the twenty nineteen redevelopment plan, and you see, well, here, you know, some of the things we're dealing with tonight are in there. And I'm wondering, what is it that is planned for the three blocks from Tenth to Eleventh? I, I haven't heard anything ever.
Oh, in that area I mentioned?
Yeah, about what might be.
This area?
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
I don't have many more meetings to ask.
Yeah, no. I haven't received anything either. You know, we put that boundary in there, recognizing we had some infrastructure issues.
Yeah.
And it was also an area of the community that had potential for lots to be assembled in a project moved forward. I've only had a few conversations with developers that have expressed interest, but I haven't seen anything materialize there.
I was very supportive of moving it to Tenth Street, because it's such a deteriorated area. It's not a compliment to Aggieville. But I just wondered if there ever is, anybody got ideas?
Yeah, I, I hope so. My daughter lived in one of those houses for a year. That was quite an experience.
They look sad. And I, it's just not the best face we want. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
The, the bottom line is, the reason we're here tonight, we're trying to figure out how to pay for that parking garage. It, it's not, we, the city wants a parking garage. And so, we're looking for some help with somebody to build a parking garage. It's, more or less.
Yeah. Aggieville wants a garage. I think you've, you've heard the support tonight, probably primarily for that asset. I think TJ's recognized Aggieville's been looking for additional parking. We are chewing up a lot of on, on-street parking. We are moving a lot of parking lots out of existence. So, either we fulfill the mission and the vision of structure parking, or we leave Aggieville in a very compromised position. We haven't declined the number of parking stalls. We've added, but the convenience of where those parking lots were has impacted the district. This will give us another resource on the eastern edge of the district that will allow for an additional five hundred stalls.
And so, yeah, the thing is, all we're looking for here is, how does the city pay for part of the parking garage that we want, without paying for it out of property, our property taxes, the sales tax we're getting, anything else? And so, we're looking to figure out, okay, let's just take the money that he's going to generate in property tax, sales tax, transient guest tax, off of that hotel, not off of anything downtown, not off of anything else, and use that money instead of digging into our own pockets to pay for the thing.
The alternative is, issue the debt, incentivize the development, possibly not to much degree, but capture all the revenue generated from the development to pay for the garage. So, in that scenario, we take fifteen to twenty million out as a debt payment for the next ten to twenty years. We wait for the development to occur. We take the risk and wait. Here, we're not taking that risk. We're not issuing that debt. He has agreed to move forward with his private development and generate a public resource.
Yeah. And I'm not worried about the, using the transient guest tax, because A, it's new transient guest tax that we're not getting already, and B, we've used transient guest tax for the, for the conference center. And so, it's not really, it's, yeah, it's a new, new way to do, a new way to pay for. But the thing is, we're, it's going to help with potential tourism.
Yep.
By building a place for people to park, so they can spend their money here in the community.
And state statute requires us to use transient guest tax for tourism. It has to be used in that vein. Now, it is a broad definition, and there's a lot of things that count as tourism. But if any visitor's coming to our community, they're more likely in a vehicle, and they do need a place to park.
So, all right. Any other questions for, for Jason? Comments?
Yeah, I want to make some comments. You know, the, the transient guest tax thing, I've got a lot of feedback on that. And a couple of the folks, I won't use their names, you know, really don't like the idea, because they're saying, okay, I have a parking lot at my hotel that I have to maintain. So, why can't I use my transient guest tax that I generate at my hotel to pay for my parking lot? And, and that piece of logic made sense to me. And so, that's why I tend to agree with Commissioner Morris. I'm not sure I like the idea of, of taking that, you know, transient guest tax. And I know, you know, the Hilton got some benefit on that, on the garage. And then we changed how that was funded, because I had issues with that, you know, years ago on the commission. And we, we moved it so that it's, it's, it's coming out of a different pot right now. So, so that, that's one of the things that bothers me on that. I think it's important that, you know, at least the news media, both print and social media, understands what, what you've pointed out here tonight, because most of the feedback I've gotten is about the redevelopment and details of that. And I'm not voting on that tonight. I'm just voting on the TIF, because I agree, this project needs to go forward. But the details of, you know, how sales tax, transient guest tax is going to be used and all that, that's a discussion for later on. And so, I hope, hope that's made clear, because some of those headlines really confuse people. I got several emails where people are up in arms about that, and we're not at that point yet. I, I think the TIF makes sense, that the details on the others, we'll need to hash that out. Now, my other question on that is, this is going to require four votes. Will the redevelopment portion of that require four votes?
No, it can be passed by a simple majority of three votes.
Okay. So, so that also makes a difference in, in how that pans out. And that's one of the reasons I mentioned the CID thing, you know, because maybe that's a way to take care of the loss of, if, if transient guest tax does not become part of this, maybe, maybe a CID could be part of it, though, yes, it can be as high as two cents, as I recall, that you can add to it. And that would put, you know, the taxes down in that area around eleven cents on the dollar, which, which I know is a downside.
Yeah.
But, but something that, that might be considered. So, as long as everybody understands, all we're voting on is, is the TIF, and the redevelopment comes later, and that's going to be, you know, some long-term discussions, and we'll get right down in the details. I don't have a problem with voting yes on this tonight.
So, I support the initiative. I think we need to get moving as quick as we can to get Aggieville pieced together again and move forward. The other thing is, the big thing that's been said a lot already, is that the city's getting a lot they're not going to have to finance. And that's a, a big part of it. So, a lot of people saying, why are you giving developer money? Why can't they do it on their own? Well, we're making a trade-off here, because if they do it, we don't have to do it. I don't have heartburn about the transient guest tax. I think it's, fits within the statute. Obviously, we wouldn't be talking about it unless we're able to actually do it. When I hear the hotels say, well, I maintain a public, I maintain a parking lot, and I pay for it myself, but you usually have a sign on there that says, only if you stay at my hotel can you use this parking lot, where this is bringing in public parking, which we're going to get advantage, which again means the city isn't going to have to develop it. So, I don't think that's a good comparison or a way to justify not using the transient guest tax. So, like I said, I think we need to get moving as fast as we can. We need to piece Aggieville back to, together. And I remember when the project first came out, what the biggest, I think what the biggest complaint I heard was we weren't doing the garage at the same time. And people were saying, we're going to have a hard time, you know, surviving until that garage gets built. And now, that's part of the plan, at least the plan we're talking about tonight. So, I'll be voting yes.
I, I'm going to be voting yes on the narrow issue this evening. But I served on the Aggieville Vision Plan, and we talked a lot about the character of Aggieville. And what we're doing in Aggieville with parking garage hotels, big footprint items, is not necessarily what the public, maybe planners interpreted it one way, or city developers, but the public did not interpret it that way, with big box and national chains and large footprint items. So, but anyway, just, you know, it, it needs, we talk a lot about the character of Aggieville, and I think that that's something we still need to consider, because the character is changing, has changed, and will never be the same again. So, it's moving.
And the plan is to, to keep Moro as Moro, and just, just the fringe areas around the outside, more or less, is what's going to change. But you're right, it is going to be much different, so.
Okay. My move, we approve first reading of an ordinance adopting an amended redevelopment plan for the Aggieville TIF district.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve this amendment to the Aggieville Tax Incentment Financing Redevelopment Plan. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That is the, it for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn the December fifth, twenty twenty-three City Commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Please call the roll again.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That is, meeting adjourned.